I'd like to call the order, the meeting to order. This is the Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, March 21st, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Tabana.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could get a moment of silence, please, please use it as you wish. Madam Clerk, please call, read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of the 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June 16th, 2021, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, the Quincy City Council will convene via remote conferencing services that will be live streamed and air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9 Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
First item is 2022-043 in order. Municipal School Building Authority Statement of Interest, the Broad Meadows Middle School.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor, was that, who's that Counselor?
Liang.
Counsel, Counsel Liang, seconded. Any discussion on the motion, otherwise we're going to go into Paul. Commissioner Paul Heinz, is that correct?
If you so choose.
I'll go right into you, Mr. Heinz, go right ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Council members. Was with you a few weeks back, not long ago, regarding MSBA matter, and that was a core program for the hopeful replacement of the Squonham Elementary School. We're before you tonight with a couple of projects that we are proposing to present to the MSBA under their accelerated repair program. This program is limited to boilers, roofs, and doors and windows. An expedited process on their end to help get these relatively simple projects underway, and generally speaking there for energy conservation purposes. We have several before you, windows at Point Webster, brews at a number of schools, and the boiler at, boilers at the Parker School. Tonight is not, obviously seeking an appropriation of any funds, it's really just to, an endorsement or a vote of support to authorize and allow the superintendent at my office to go forward with filing an application or statement of interest to the MSBA under the accelerated repair program to do these projects. We would be before you again in the future, if we are successful and are invited in by the MSBA on these various projects, either all or some. They don't need to take them all, and they don't need to take any. But if any are successful, we of course would be before you again at that time.
Thank you, Director, I appreciate it, and I know the next six items, the first six items on our agendas are going to these building authority statement of interest for each school. Is there any discussion on this motion for the counselors? Seeing none, may I please, Madam Clerk, can I, do I have, do I have Counselor Mahoney? You have the floor, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I just got a quick question, so I know, it seems like it's standard language in all of these pieces, so not all of these schools will be looking for roofs or windows or different things, so it could be something different at every building, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
I just wanted to, yeah.
Yep, if you're interested, this time, we're looking for roofs at Broad Meadows and Parker, boilers at Parkers, windows at Point Webster. There's another roof, I've got another roof. But, yeah, it's not all at each one.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I noticed it just looks like it's, it's standard language on all of those, and then, this is all recommendations that are coming from the school committee, correct?
From myself with the superintendent's offices.
Okay, and I was just curious, because, you know, I don't see Lincoln Hancock on here, so is there nothing that we need at Lincoln Hancock, I'm just, just curious? Because I know that's a building that we always talked about, so I was just curious to know.
Yep, we just, not long ago, did a large roofing project at Lincoln Hancock, and have just completed the windows and doors project. Yeah.
Again.
And it doesn't have boilers, it's all electric, so everything we can do with MSBA at Lincoln Hancock, we have done.
Yeah, okay, I just, it's just hard to keep up, and I just wanted, I was just curious, because like I said, each one of those has, it's not that we're doing all of those pieces, it's pieces of those, pieces of potential issues that we have with those buildings. Thank you very much, I appreciate the explanation.
Welcome. The MSBA does have years of age guidelines for particular projects, so though there are more that we would like to do, other, other projects are not qualified as of yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselors? Just real quick, Director Heinz, thank you for, you know, for all your hard work over the years on doing these statement of interests and getting them in, and being proactive and checking on all these schools, so I really do appreciate it. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
And it was a yes from Counselor Andronico, nine members.
May I please, just for a moment?
Motion carries, go right ahead, Director.
I just want to say, I appreciate your kind words to me, but with regard to our keeping on, pressed and keep it on schedule with the MSBA, we cannot leave out Laura Owens at the superintendent's office. She, she holds us to it, she, she's, does an amazing job, she's a great asset, and I can't let you thank me without acknowledging her.
Well, I concur, Director Heinz, thank you, Laura Owens, she's been a great help, and she still continues to help us over here in the city council as well. She's a great person for over there, thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2022-044 in order. Municipal School Building Authority Statement of Interest for the Point Webster Middle School.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kane, any discussion on this motion, this one's Point Webster Middle School. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2022-045.
Motion to waive the reading, motion approved.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Liang, any, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, motion carries, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2022-046.
Motion to waive the reading, motion approved.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, do you have a second? Seconded by Counselor Liang on the Montclair Elementary School. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries, thank you, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2022-047.
Motion to waive the reading, motion approved.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Liang, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries, thank you, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2022-042. A resolve supporting net zero emissions buildout as part of the Squonham School feasibility study.
I have, I'm going to go with the sponsor, Counsel Liang, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'm actually going to defer to my colleague in Ward Six, since it does pertain to the school in his ward, so I'd like to go to Counsel Harris first, if I could.
That's what I was going to go to, Counsel Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not on the list of the sponsors, but obviously, there's nothing more that I'd like to see happen without holding anything up to make sure that we do, I do support the net zero emissions for the building. Obviously, looking forward to the future and everything that's very, very necessary, and again, I thank Counsel Liang, Andronico, Counsel Liang, Andronico, and Phelan, they had, Nina listed twice, but that's great, but please add me onto that, and I'm all good with that, please, support it, thank you, folks, sorry.
Counsel Harris, you wanted to co-sponsor that as well, am I correct?
Oh, absolutely, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to, Counsel Liang, I know, and Counsel Harris in the Ward Six, I'd also like to co-sponsor this as well, we give this to Jen Manning, very much supportive of this, this resolution for the net zero for, for our new school coming up. So Counsel Liang, back to you, we have a motion made by Counsel Harris, Counsel Liang, do we have a second?
Yes, before we second it, I know that we had some requests come in from residents to take a look and consider some changes in the language, and I do want to just acknowledge that and say that if there is, you know, if there are going to be any friendly amendments made, that I'd like to accept them and welcome them, but I'd love to second it as well, so.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're in discussion for some friendly amendments if they're coming in.
Correct, and I believe some of my colleagues are interested in discussing that further.
Okay. And if that's okay with you, Counsel Liang, are we okay to, on the friendly amendments, if anybody else wants to co-sponsor, is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sounds good, I'm going to defer to Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, President Tabana, yeah, in that spirit of collaboration, I did have the chance to talk it over with a few constituents and with Counsel Liang prior to the meeting, and I'm hoping that this will still be a friendly amendment, but in the last line that states that the feasibility study for the Squonham School also include the possibility of a net zero emissions buildout, that we replace the word possibility with the word goal. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
So the motion is made by Counselor Andronico to go from possible to goal? Is that the word we're using to switch over?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I have a motion made by Counsel Andronico, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan, we're going to vote on this, would, any discussion on that, real quick? Counsel Phelan, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I'm in support of this, this measure, or like a lot of the other councils, we've got calls, and I really thank Counsel Liang for taking lead on this and putting this together, I was very proud to be one of the co-sponsors on it. And also, we had, after some discussions today, I'm sure lots of people have got it, I very strongly support changing the word from possibility to goal. I think we have a chance, and it's not just a good environment, it's good financially, what these buildings cost, the long-term cost of energy today, to make it so it's the most efficient we can put in, we're putting net zero emissions, I think makes sense both environmentally and also on a financial level. So I support this, that's why I seconded, and I will be voting for it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Phelan, Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Actually, I was just going to be saying the same thing, that we got a lot of phone calls and text messages and support of this net zero, and I would thank Counsel Liang for bringing this forward, and then also, just for the amendment that we added to goal, I think it's an important one, it could be the first one in Quincy for nets zero, so I think we're all on the same page, and I'm hoping that we can get there, so, and I am, I think I'm listed up, but I also want to make sure that I'm, I'm on the for sponsoring as well, because I think it's, it's something that we should all be 100% in favor in pushing forward to, not only for just this building, but for all the buildings that we're moving forward to in the, in the future of the city of Quincy, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney, okay, Counsel Liang, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to speak first, but before we go to a vote, if I could, Mr. President, I just want to give a huge thank you to everyone, all of you, my colleagues, and, you know, folks in the mayor's office in collaborating and putting this together, and the constituents and residents as well that we serve, right? Like, I think this is something that we are all in support of, and I just think it's a great opportunity and moment to sort of pause, right, and recognize that this is what happens, right? When we have collaborative efforts, you know, good things happen, so I just wanted to extend my gratitude to everyone for participating in this and making this possible. Thank you, Mr. Resident.
Thank you, Counsel, I still have Counsel Harris, I think I should have your hand raised. Well, the welcome to Counsel Harris.
I think I might have hit that by accident, so I'm all good, I just lowered it, thank you.
No problem, Counselor, any other council member, any other counselors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, real quick on this, we're going to do a friendly amendment, possible to goal, we have a motion made, and seconded, so we can just do one vote?
Roll call vote?
Yeah, just one, one vote with the friendly amendment.
Certainly, if you'd like, we usually vote for the amendment.
You want to vote for the amendment first, and then, well, it's a friendly amendment by Counsel Liang, she's willing to just vote, so, and real quick, Counsel, Clerk Committee's Jen Mannings to add Counsel Harris and add myself to the co-sponsors, as well as Counsel Liang, Mahoney, Andronico, and Phelan. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2022-048, a resolve seeking an update on 74 Greenleaf Street.
Counselor Mahoney, do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, if I have a motion to move this to finance oversight and public building, but if I could, this is just asking for an update on 74 Greenleaf Street, I think this came, I know it came in to the council in 2017 for appropriation to purchase Greenleaf Street, where the hope was that the public safety buildings would be moving into that building. It seemed like at the time it was, it was the right thing to do, it's six years later, and the building is still under enormous renovations that are going on over there, and I'm just looking for an update as to what's been happening. I know in the last several years, I've asked for updates at different times, and have been told that they're still continuing to work on it. I'm not sure what the, what the problems are that are preventing this building from being done, it seemed like it was going to be a six to eight week project to get into that building, and it's six years later, so what I'm asking for is just for the administration to make a presentation on the status of 74 Greenleaf, the project, the financial reporting, cost to date, including the man hours of the project, status of the renovations, and the final use of the building, because at this point, we've already updated all of the work over at 50 Civil Ave, where we thought that building was going to be sold. I'd also like for the city auditor to work with the chief financial officer to supply complete reporting of funds spent on this building and renovation of the grounds. I think it's important for us to stay on top of these projects. Something that I find very interesting is that in the original proposal that said that they were going to raise the garage immediately, and currently there is a Mustang, an antique Mustang, being parked inside that garage, it's curious to me what this building's being used for and who's utilizing the building, so I think it's important that we get a, you know, get more hands around some of the projects that are happening in the city of Quincy, so if we could, I'd like to have this moved to finance oversight and public buildings.
So I have a motion to approve and refer to finance oversight and public buildings committees, so three different committees, do I have a second on this?
A second.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Palmucci, any discussion on the motion? With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2022-049, a gift for $350 from various donors to D.A.R.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan, I have a second by Counselor.
Andronico.
Andronico. Second by Counsel Andronico, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion carries. I need, as if someone can entertain me with the approval of previous, a previous minute, meeting minutes of March 7th of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Counselor Kane, in discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, you know, well, you know, I'm sorry, Counsel, Madam Clerk will do, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Communications or reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards? Seeing none, unfinished business in proceeding minute, meeting? Seeing none. I know it's 6:55 right now, but we need to go into recess to have a public hearing at 7:30, and we will reopen our city council meeting after that public hearing. So with that, I'd like to make it, I can get a motion to recess, please?
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess by Counsel Phelan, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. We'll be coming back at 7:30, so I need to recess, we'll be back after public hearing.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to, welcome to the Monday, March 21st, 7:30 PM, public hearing to order, I'd like to call it to order. In accordance with the Chapter 20 of Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June 16th, 2021, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38 and 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening, convening via remote conferencing services, services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, a channel QATV 9 Government Access and live streaming at www.qatv.org. So this public hearing is on Council Order 2021-041, grant of locations, New England Power Company, National Grid, North Quincy Cable Project, Cables Project, Newport Ave, Southern Ottery, and Morrison Street. Before, at this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature or dial a star nine on your phone when you are called upon, please state your name and address. But before that happens, I would like to either call on, from National Grid, Joe Carroll and, or Joe Cardinal, who, and councilors, they gave us the presentation that's being put in front of us, if you looked, looked at it, already started, later on, if you have any questions, when we bring it back to the council, please do so. But at this point, and this is again, the North Quincy Cable Replacement Project, so at this point, I'd like to ask either Joe Cardinal or Joe Carroll, if you could please, I see Joe, hey, Joe Carroll, how are you, Joe?
Good evening, Counsel, I'm doing well, thank you, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity. I will yield my time to Joe Cardinal to run through a quick presentation, just review the project. Again, this is like Phase Two, coming off the Phase One that we spoke, actually, last year, virtual time, so if I could, if that's okay with, with you, Counsel Harris, I'll turn it to Joe.
Absolutely, thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Counsel Harris. I'm not sure, I believe if everybody's read the presentation and looked through the presentation, we don't have to bring it up on the screen, I can just sort of run through, run through the presentation, if that's okay with everyone.
Joe, Joe, I'm sorry, Joe, if you could, this is the public hearing, so this is going out to the public, any possibility you can put that up on your screen? I know the council has got a copy of it, but it really, as, as a public hearing, can we pop that up there if we can?
Okay, I'm going to try here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
It's a great presentation, that's why I think it would be, it would really be a mess if we didn't, we didn't show it, because it looks like to me, my opinion, of course, for the improvement in North Quincy, to be able to improve our cable and everything that's needed, it'd be great if you could bring that up.
It looks like I'm still having a problem, or work on it for another minute here. Brian, if you are on, if you can bring it up faster than I can, would you, would you please do that for me?
There we go.
You can see it now? Everybody can see that now, Counsel Harris?
It was up there for a second, and it was, let's see if we can try that again, there we go.
Okay. Okay, so, I'll start now, good evening, President Tabana, Counsel Harris, and fellow city councilors, my name is Joe Cardinal, I'm the community and customer manager for National Grid. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak about our grant of location request tonight. As I will be giving the presentation, I also wanted to mention that we have a couple of members of the project team on the call, and they are available to answer questions if necessary at the end. The two team members that I wanted to introduce, Joe Carroll, who is the director of community and customer management, and I also wanted to introduce Brian Dunn, Brian is the project manager for the, the North Quincy Cable Replacement Project. As you might remember, I came before the city council last spring, I believe it was May 3rd, for a grant of location for phase one of this project. The grant of location was granted by the city council, and phase one was completed in August. I'm happy to say that phase one went smoothly from both a construction standpoint and also a community outreach standpoint. So if I may, quickly run through the presentation, and that probably you had a chance to review, and I can point out some of the previous community outreach examples in our plan for outreach for this phase of the project. And I also wanted to, you know, let you see some of the benefits and needs for this project. So basically, this has been a multi-year process to determine the best route for the cables. This was done at the multiple meetings with the Commissioners DPW team, the mayor, and state permitting agencies. What we did was, we looked at multiple routes through the city of Quincy to get from point A to point B, and we come to the determination that this route is actually the best route. So basically, we are following the same route as the existing cables, 3.3 miles from the North Quincy Substation to the Field Street Substation. We are replacing direct buried cables with a modern cable system encased in a concrete duct bank with manholes. So basically, the existing system is two transmission cables sitting in sand, in a sand trench with a concrete slab over the top. The new cable system will be in a manhole and duct system. So if we had, and we have had, failures on the existing transmission system, we have to dig up the street to get to them to make the repairs. Once the new system is in place, if we have an issue, we're working, we're working in the manholes. We are also investing $92 million into this project for the city of Quincy and for this new transmission system. And this is for the city of Quincy. These, these two transmission cables go from the North Quincy Sub to the Field Street Sub. They don't, they're not there for any other communities, they're here for the, for the city of Quincy. Project benefits, as, as I, as I just mentioned, and also the fact that this reliable, new reliable electric transmission system will serve approximately 35,000 customers in the, in the city of Quincy. Basically, the transmission grid is the backbone of the entire distribution and delivery system in the city of Quincy. Basically, you have to have a strong transmission system between substations so that the feed is that come out of those substations and serve the customers of Quincy is also a strong system. This project will also result in an increase in the real estate tax revenue for the city of Quincy by approximately $4 million in the first five years after the cable is energized. And we are anticipating that, that cable will go into service at the, approximately the end of 2023. Project Route Restoration. Basically, any street that we're disturbing, we're going to be replacing curb to curb with new asphalt. Well, what we'll be doing as we're starting the project, when we go through and install the manhole system, we'll be putting a permanent trench over that. And then, when we're done installing the entire manhole and duct system, we'll be coming back, we'll be grinding up the roadway, and we'll be putting it in new pavement. Project Need. Basically, the existing, existing cables need to be replaced because of their age, deteriorating condition, reliability issues, environmental issues, obsolete technology, and their direct bury. We want to get these cables that are fluid filled out of the ground and go with the updated manhole and duct system. And also, we found out last couple of times where we've had issues on these cables, that replacement parts and manpower to fix these cables is hard to come by. I've included a picture of the project route here. This includes both phase one and phase two. Phase one in white is the part that was completed last summer. We came out of the North Quincy Sub, we went across 1015 Newport Ave. We did directional drilling on that section of Newport Ave. We rose back up, installed a little bit of a manhole and duct system to get us under the West Farnum Street overpass. My request tonight for the grant of location is for the remainder of the area that you see in purple there. And I, and I must also mention, it does not include Furnace Brook Parkway, we'll be going to the DCR for a grant of location for that stretch of the, of the, the project. But our request in front of the Quincy City Council is the Newport Ave, Southern Ottery, and Morrison Street. Community Outreach. It was an important part of phase one, and extremely important as we move into phase two because of the length of the project. Next week, next Tuesday night, the 29th, we have a virtual open house schedule. This is our third open house since the beginning of the project. First one since, since we've begun phase two, we will have more of these open houses. Inventations were sent out in multiple languages so that we were able to reach all residents, which included both landlords and renters. And we will also have translators available during the open house if there are any concerns with that. I've included at the bottom of this slide and a few of the other slides, the important numbers for our outreach. That 1-800 number is active now. If somebody calls it, if they have questions about the project, they can call that number. The, the www is a website, the northquincy.cableproject.com, where we've got a lot of good information on there. And if somebody wants to email us a question, they can email it to us at info@northquincy.cableproject.com. There's some of the community outreach that we've done up, up to this date. It includes direct mailings, we've done door-to-door for residents and businesses, we've sent out email newsletter, a project introduction letter, a project restart letter, we've done website updates, we've done newspaper articles, and again, we have the phone number for customers, we have the email for customers. And here, we include a lot of the dates that we did a lot of that outreach, and you can see there the dates of the, of the two open houses that we've had so far. And again, I mentioned the open house that we have next Tuesday night. And again, I've included the, the project website there. Additional pre-construction activities, door-to-door business and residential outreach, we'll keep that up, we'll keep that going. Direct mailing will continue to be about as, a regular email newsletter program, and we got to keep our website updated also. And the last bullet here, we also need to continue the coordination with the Commissioners DPW team. In the next couple of weeks, we will have the contractor in to meet with the DPW, and we'll make sure that they understand, you know, the schedules, the traffic mitigation, the necessary permits, basically the rules for working on your roads. And the good news is, is the contractor that did phase one of the project will also be doing phase two of the project for us. So they've also been in, they've been in on phase one and met with the, the DPW team, but we're certainly going to have them back in there again. Fact sheet. This is just one of the many fact sheets that we have out on the website. Again, I've included all of the numbers here. I know our stakeholder relations team is working with Mr. Walker in the mayor's office right now to get this on the city of Quincy website. So anybody that's perusing your website will see this information, and they can click on our website if they want additional information. Again, the, the community outreach, we understand how, how important it is. So that's why we're going to have, you know, a lot of people that are going to be active on this project, and, and, you know, we've had this project website set up and the, the construction emails and the toll-free hotline. And, you know, we have a dedicated group of myself and Joe Carroll, and we have a community engagement director, but we also added something a little extra on this project, which is, I think is very important. We put into the bid documents that the contractors that were bidding on this project had to have a staff person on site during construction, not somebody that's working in the machines or, or working in the hall, but a contractor outreach staff person that is boots on the ground, out in the, out in the neighborhood. So if a resident or a business person walks out of their place of business or their house, has an issue with the construction that's going on in front of their house, they have somebody that can help them out right away. Obviously, anything that is major and concerning will make its way back to, to myself and to Joe and to our community engagement director, but we want to have somebody boots on the ground, out in the field, able to solve some of the quick and easy problems as we're, as we're working out there on, on your streets. So basically, this concludes my presentation tonight, Mr. President and Counsel Harris, thank you, and fellow councilors, thank you for your time and consideration for this grant of location.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe and Joe. I appreciate, this, this was very well put together, and I, I want to thank you for that. And again, the, replacing the cables for National Grid, and the overall, I think that's, that, I'm, I'm happy about that. The improvements will be, as you mentioned, would be very, very important in the future. So that being said, now, do we have anybody who's raised a hand? Counselor Kane. Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the Joes and Brian from National Grid for being here tonight. I appreciate the communication that has been put out through the last phase of the project, continuing into this phase. I've got my trusty direct mail that's come through in multiple languages, which I appreciate due to the diversity of languages spoken in Ward Three and along the area that this project is taking place. So thank you for being here tonight. This is an important project for us, improving the electricity backbone of the city. And we've already seen improvements up where we are on Forbes Town Neighbors, I haven't heard about a blackout in a while or brownout, so keep up the good work and thanks for the improvements.
Thank you, Counsel Kane. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Yeah, echoing Counsel Kane, I want to thank Endgrid, yeah, this is a great package. It's been out a lot. Folks have asked me about it, I know I have a stretch from Fields up Southern Ottery that I want to get with probably Joe Carroll and company to see if I can grab slide number nine. I'm going to send out my own mailing to those residents that are in that strip, I think that run up to Furnace Brook Parkway there at the corner. I think that's where it, it moves on to Furnace Brook Parkway, but I'll talk with Joe. And just thank Endgrid, overall, knock on wood, we don't have any more surprise storms, but they did a great job in Quincy this year with everything we had. We had a couple of, of big ones, and we always seem to have a couple of situations in Ward One with water issues, which were very limited, but Endgrid was, was all over it when they, when they needed it to be. So I appreciate the help we've had citywide, and especially in Ward One, and I'll catch up with Joe Carroll and, and get, get what I need to reiterate to those folks on, on Southern Ottery and Ward One. Thank you to both Joes.
Thank you, Counsel, and be happy to share that and with the distribution list, along with any of the other councils as well.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Counsel, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, I want to just acknowledge that this is a public hearing, so I don't want to dive into too many questions, so I'd like to dispose these to both Joe and Joe as statements, and then hope to follow up with them as well. To Counsel Kane's point about the translation services, I think that's super important. I want to just reiterate, for this particular project, you do cut through a lot of, you know, AAPI communities, and so I would just ask that we not only are providing translation services on the materials, but that we also are providing interpretation services and ADA compliance for the email newsletters that are going out, the website, right, the updates that are going up there, and the toll-free hotline. I think that with this, right, communication is key. Nobody enjoys when, you know, there's construction on the roads and there's detours and all of that, and so communication is of the utmost importance. So I just want to make sure that that is going to be a priority across all mediums, but not just the, the mailers that are going out. I also just want to ask as well, if we could, to put up more signage in and around the areas where this is happening. During the first phase, I recall a lot of folks reaching out, either calling or texting or emailing and saying, you know, Quincy's doing so much construction over here, and it's causing such a backup for folks trying to get over the bridge in the morning. And I remember explaining to them, you know, it's actually National Grid, you know, we are, I understand, coordinating through DPW, but it would be helpful just to have more signage available, so folks are aware that this is National Grid, they can certainly go to the website, find out more information as well. I do appreciate that you, again, are coordinating with DPW on this, but I would also just suggest to you that it'd be helpful to work with the Quincy Police Department, right? The stretch of road particularly over Newport, we just had a tragic accident there, and, you know, not too long ago, I just asked to prioritize working with Quincy Police to make sure that we have folks on site to help with any detours. And then, it would also be helpful, if you could, Joe and Joe, let us know the hours that you plan on doing the work, as well as the duration of this project. Again, just as constituents are reaching out to us, I think that information would be really helpful for us to be able to give them a timeframe for this. So that was it. Again, just, you know, didn't want to get into any questions, because I do understand it's a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, but I would just hope that Joe and Joe would take those comments and build it into their plan as well. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counsel Liang. And again, obviously, I don't see any other. Sorry, somebody's, please mute, watch your mutes. I just want to reiterate, one of the, one of the toughest situations that councilors, especially ward councilors and at-large councilors have, is when the communication isn't out there, and the fact that there's going to be good communication, that takes less stress off of our constituents, and also less stress off of us, because we, everybody knows what's going on, and that's, that's the key. When there's no communication, that's when that, that gray area happens, and nobody knows what's going on. I, I really want to, I'm going to go to the public now, but I want to, again, before I end, Joe, Joe and Joe, I, I appreciate this presentation. So is there any, anyone?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I could answer just Counsel Liang, she made some great points.
Oh, absolutely.
Just, just to reiterate, we have been, and, and there is a lot of great work being done in, in your great city, and the big thing is coordination, and we have been meeting with not only DPW, pulling our feet to the, to the fire to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing, also within the traffic management plan from that end, and the component of that is within the Quincy Police. And that's one of the bigger meetings that we'll be holding and coordinating with all the work and making sure the resources are there. And, and of course, communication that will be all shared, and we'll certainly provide your committee and all the council's updates, and, and if there's any other items that we're missing within that communication, we're happy to do it, because we do believe on this, it is communication. We saw on the last one, that's why we put a dedicated person out there as well, from that end. So thank you for the time, I just wanted to get back.
Thank you again. So do we have any, anybody who's, wants to speak in favor against from the public? I, okay, we got Citizen Rotifell. Can we let Citizen Rotifell speak, please? That's good. Okay.
How you doing? John Rotifell, 62 Grandwall Road. I know you were hoping I wouldn't speak, Counsel Harris, but I'm.
No, that's not true.
I'm going to speak, I, I will try not to ruin the meeting. I kind of feel like scheduling this at 7:30 tonight kind of ruined the meeting a little bit, because I was confused. I came here late, because I saw that 7:30 meeting, the public hearing, and then I was like, oh my God, it really started at 6:30 tonight, so I missed the first eight minutes. But anyway, I'm just going to say that, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of upgrading our electrical grid in, in the city. I just want to make sure that when they tear up the streets and they patch them up before they're repaved for the good time, that they do a good job repaving them and making the temporary fix, you know, as, as good as possible. We don't want just a temporary fix that's just good enough that you can drive over. We want a temporary fix that almost looks like it's a, a new street again. It's a really big project if you're investing $93 million or whatever those numbers was. And the other point I just want to point out, I'm, I'm looking at the website, the North Quincy Project, that, the whatever website that he mentioned, I'm looking at that on my other computer, and there is some information on there that's valuable.
computer, and there is some information on there that's valuable. I just want to say, when it comes to translating it, translate it in all languages. I mean, I'm not sure why we just pick a couple, but we got Russian developers up in Quincy Center, translate it in Russian. There's a ton of Italian immigrants that live in the city. Translate it in Italian, translate it in French. And then from looking at the PDF documents that you have on your website, make those onto, you know, HTML documents so they're inside the thing. So when people are looking at the website, the website actually contains the information. When you have a website and it has links within the website that have PDF documents that are in there, those aren't things that are searchable via all the search engines and the information really isn't getting out to the public. So if you really want to get information out to the public, it needs to be posted onto the web in a searchable format, which would be, you know, better than a PDF document, but actually, you know, some sort of pages that are actually hardcoded on the website. And then if we're going to put a link to it on the Quincy website to make it easy to find, please, city councilors, everybody here who is at the site, please, I'm really confused on the new website. It's really hard to find anything. So please help fix the website so we can find this information. Give me an example. This, Counselor Harris, this is a public hearing, right? Right now, would you say this is a public hearing? There's somewhere in the website.
I believe, John, I believe I said that at the beginning.
No, no, I'm saying if we can't, but I mean, there's a place on our city website that says public hearings. But when you click on that place for public hearings, this, this meeting isn't listed tonight, you know? So I mean, what is a public hearing? All public hearings should be listed on, in one place. They're scattered all around. I should be the one to know because I scatter all around to try to find information. And it's very important. So if this gentleman right now who was just speaking, that he really wants to let the people know about this project, I kind of, from me looking at this project, it looks like they might be ripping up all of Newport Ave, going all the way up to it's Furness Brook Parkway. So it's a pretty big project.
It is a big project, John, and I appreciate your input.
When they rip up the street to National Grid, because this is National Grid, right? That's doing this?
That's what it says. Yep, that's what we're talking about.
The public notice doesn't say National Grid. The public notice says New England Power Company. So even that I was confused about. So I mean, National Grid is New England Power Company, am I correct? Or am I wrong to assume that? Are they the same entity?
I believe they are, John. So listen, I appreciate your input and your.
And I appreciate, I appreciate seeing the presentation because the people from National Grid do have to remember when you present something to the city council, when it's a public hearing, it is nice to make a presentation to the public. So, you know, I look forward, I'll come to that meeting on March 29th. I actually hope they don't vote on this until after that March 29th meeting. I hope this doesn't go to vote tonight. But other than that, I'm going to stop talking. I don't want to stress out Counselor Harris anymore. You have a good night, Counselor Harris. Peace.
Thank you. You're not stressing me out, John. In fact, I didn't interrupt you really much tonight. You know, you're stuck to point. We appreciate that. So is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor against? All right, so at this point, no written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. Seeing no further public comment, I will close the public hearing at 7:59. This is a long one for me. I have to see a doctor after this one. Thanks, folks. 7:59, we're going right in. Go ahead, Noel, your counsel, President Tabana, let's move on.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. We're going to reopen and back from recess to our city council meeting. We're going to go right into reports of committees. Counselors, anyone, reports of committees? I got Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking to call a finance meeting for the first meeting in April.
That's under scheduling of meetings, but.
Oh, okay.
It's okay, we'll go back to it in a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I think, I think I'm, I'm sorry, President, President Tabana, I think I'm up during reports of committees tonight, tonight, in front of the Public Works, in front of the council. Public hearings were held prior to this evening, not prior, after or during the city council meeting on council order 2021-041, grant of location, New England Power Company, National Grid, North Quincy Cables Project, Newport Ave, Southern Ottery, and Morrison Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kane. Any discussion real quick? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Eight members. Counselor Andronico voted in favor.
Okay.
That's all I have from Public Works this evening. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none, on to presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Will Counsel Palmucci?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a report of committee. I just wasn't quick enough with my virtual hands.
Okay, go right ahead.
I just wanted to report that the Oversight Committee was scheduled to meet this evening, however, was canceled as of, I believe, Friday. Each counselor should have received two letters from the Quincy Retirement Board, one from the attorney, one from the chair, both of which spoke to the resolutions which we were tasked with having a hearing on this evening. In one of the letters, it was requested that they be given a 30-day date in the future due to the unavailability of one of their key team members who would need to be present as well as to provide an opportunity for their investment advisor to create a presentation for the council, so, or for the committee. So I will reschedule that meeting. Every counselor should have a copy of those two letters. I will reschedule that meeting for a 30-day date and we will continue to discuss that issue. So I just wanted to explain why the meeting was canceled for this evening and what the plan was. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. And that's the reason why our Public Works Committee, our public hearing had to be reached at 7:30 because we had the oversight scheduled from 6:30 to 7:30. We had advertised it, so that's the reason why we had a little delay in that. But thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Any other, any of the counselors? Back to presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you very much. I'm very sad tonight to talk about my friend Kelly Cobble. Kelly Cobble passed away on March 12th, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about her. She was a graduate of North Quincy High School and she went on to Eastern Nazarene College where she met her husband Steve. And they've been married for the past 28 years, raising their two children, Isabella and Steve, in Quincy. Both of them are adults now. And she was so proud of them in their careers as environmental engineering and public health safety, both respectfully are working. Kelly was a fierce person. She loved anything with culture, anything with creative, anything that was creative, and anything Quincy. She was especially interested in history and literature. She found her passion working as a curator of the United States Department of Interior, working as a loyal public servant to the Adams National Historic Park for the past 27 years. Kelly was passionate about everything about Quincy. She was, you know, she put, I would like to say what she did was she would put the people in the community. She was involved in almost everything that you could think of. She was part of the Quincy Art Association, growing it all the way to where it is now with its gallery in Quincy Center, Quincy Youth Soccer, the Altrusar International, Quincy Historical Society, Quincy Conservation Committee, Discover Quincy. She was a parent councils for both Quincy and North Quincy High School. She was part of the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts. Additionally, she was in book clubs and she loved food and she loved her husband's cooking. But most importantly, Kelly was just an incredible person. No matter where she was, she had a great smile for people. She always had time for people. And she always never said no. If you asked Kelly for anything, she was there, whether it was volunteering or if it was just to be a friend or to go along with anything that you did. When Kelly walked in almost every parade I can think of, I always remember Kelly's great big smile waving to everybody, and she knew just about everybody. I've gotten many phone calls in regards to Kelly. People ask me if it was true, and sadly, it is true. So I'm asking everybody, if you could, just hold Kelly and her family in your memories and in your thoughts and in your prayers because it's been very difficult. It was very unexpected. And I know that a lot of people miss Kelly in this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any of the counselors? Unfortunately, just wanted to mention the passing of Donnie Bose this past week. Donnie was adored by his family, enjoyed playing Santa every year for his grandkids and many families in the Quincy Fire Department. He loved going to sporting events with his kids, taking road trips, hot dogs at Castle Island, visiting the family college in Plymouth. Donnie worked as a security supervisor for the Boston Red Sox for 15 years over at Gate A and was very known and very well-known and loved there. He took pride in his work and was a dedicated employee. He also currently worked at 100 Hancock Street in Quincy and previously worked at Barry's Deli and the Barry Ship Haven, which is right outside here, as well as Stop &amp; Shop Deli in North Quincy for many years. Donnie was a fun, spontaneous man who knew everyone and was larger than life. He was outgoing and a friend to anyone he met. You will be greatly missed by all the pleasure of knowing him. Please keep Donnie's family in your thoughts and prayers. It's been a tough time over the last week and a half now. Thank you. Any other counselors? On to the next, motions, orders, and resolutions. Seeing none, now we're back to scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Counselor Phelan.
Thank you. Now is my time. Just wanted to talk about, set up a public, a finance committee meeting for item 2022-028, appropriation of $16,400 for Pine Hill Cemetery expansion and renovation. So I'd like to put that before the next council meeting. It's April 4th.
April 4th, 6:30?
6:30, yes.
Okay, we're going to go with 6:30 on the finance on April 4th. Everybody got their calendars, counselors? Okay, it's scheduled. Any other ones, Counsel Phelan?
No, that's it. Thank you.
That's it. Any other counselors for scheduling meetings and public hearings? See anybody on there? We've gone to the end of our meeting here. Do anyone entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion granted. Meeting is now adjourned. Take care, everyone. Have a good night.